At some point, you gotta turn the flow of the street.
Yeah.
Yeah, he was, he was pretty thrilled.
Oh, yeah. You can see it on his face.
And that's just perspective for that. That's where the bulk of how.
He's pretty moved. Freshman. He said, right?
Well.
All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started this morning with council meetings. So first, we're gonna stand to the heads, Brad Alides and the Prescitable Gray Force.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, it's please. Much grace to heavenly Father, we do thank you for this day and for your blessings. And Father, now this goes as we go into this council meeting. Heavenly Father, let us open our minds and help us to just do what's best for the county. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
All right, gentlemen, thank you. Uh, yeah, we called this meeting this morning. We need to go over some things here on our budget request and try to narrow some of these items down so that we can get this budget presented to the state by October the, was it the fifth or the second?
Six.
Six. Wanted to, uh, wanted to have those discussions this morning and then will hopefully help us get to the point where we're ready to present that to the state. I guess first off, John, you wanna come up from the park? Uh, there's some questions there that John had and we had one employee that, uh, he wanted to bump up.
Good morning.
Morning, morning.
Well, I've come in here about a week or so back and kept it and I didn't have all my numbers creeped. So we'll try this once again. Uh, the reason I'm here is oversending the rainbow, just trying to get her a little more money up to snuff. Uh, get her up there where my, just like Tim, he's a twenty-four an hour. I send you to the eighteen eighty-eight, I just kinda like get them two a little bit more even. I'm not here to increase my budget whatsoever. If anything, it's gonna decrease it from what you guys had for twenty twenty-six. I'd like to stay at three, three, three hundred fifty-six thousand, four sixty. I'm gonna be taking money from the gatehouse, money which is at forty-five thousand right now. I'd like to put seventy-five percent forty-two thousand. And that will lower my gatehouse down to forty-two five sixty-eight with no additional appropriations or no head trauma payments.
Everybody understand, if you've got your book, it's on page six. Basically, that's the park secretary that he's gonna bump up and then decrease the gate. So it's basically a wash. You know, so that's, that's what John is requesting, um, this morning. So I think we'll probably, I guess, can we go ahead and vote to do that?
No, both.
No, we have to wait until the next meeting to actually approve that. But, um, this would be the first reading, uh, of that change if the county so desires, so.
So you want to take her forty-two?
Yeah. Right now, she's at, after the four percent, she's been at forty thousand eight thirty-eight. So I'm not raising this very much, eleven hundred dollars.
Yeah, I saw.
You know? And before, just like on, uh, the park secretary, I ran under right there. I've always just took from another line item, like from the gatehouse itself. That's, I guess, that's where we kinda got mixed up here and, uh, you know, just, I've always stole from other line item, the pages, same thing as I do on the groundskeeping, you know, so.
Just a lateral move, basically. What'd you say the gate would go to on that then, John?
The gate would be, it should be right around forty-two five sixty-eight on the gatehouse. That will lower that number from forty-five thousand to forty-two five sixty-eight.
Right. Okay. I just wanted to get those figures down right here.
And I think they should put her up right around twenty fourteen or twenty nineteen an hour.
Gotcha. Okay. So now we know what John's requested there. Has anybody got any more questions about that? So basically, his bottom line budget will stay the same. All right? Well, we'll, when we convene or have our next meeting, then this will all be voted on and we'll pass it through.
You might even be present.
You would not have to be here. We know what the numbers are now. We just wanted to bring him to get those numbers and know what we were dealing with as far as the budget goes. So, no, you would not have to be here. Okay? But we'll definitely put that on the agenda. That'll be one of the things on there, so. All right? If there's no further questions for John, thank you for coming in this morning.
Thank you.
Thank you, I'll have to say.
Okay. Opentender, Ryan.
Thank you, Johnson, for having me. This is about my amended, uh, request for twenty twenty-six, uh, to increase the legal secretaries, to forty-three thousand, make them vote even. It's a difference, uh, from my last request of about five thousand three hundred ninety dollars. And that's it, that's the, that's the main request. So, uh, we had the handout from last week, or last month, sorry, early this month. And, uh, we have another copy that you guys wanted to look at.
This is corrected because it's for the, what's the, was sent to us from John's office, corrected to that.
Thank you.
Would we vote on this?
For twenty twenty-six?
For twenty-six, or?
They'll, they'll do that October sixth.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll do that at the October meeting.
So then, today then, I would ask for the vote for the twenty-five to finish out the last six or seven.
They, they cannot vote on anything today.
Oh, no vote at all?
No vote at all.
So it's just bringing up to fifty-six thousand, forty-three thousand for the other two and three, and it makes everybody even?
Anybody have any questions for Ryan on that? Well, what you get there on the paper shows twenty twenty-six, his request, but he also wants to move forward with that for twenty twenty-five, the remainder of twenty twenty-five. Two separate requests there. So if you have any questions about that, you need to ask him now. And then, like I said before, it'll be the October meeting before we'll be able to vote for that. So just wanted to go over everything, make sure everybody's on the same page. Any questions for Ryan about that request?
And, and again, I do wanna say that, that five thousand, uh, three hundred ninety dollars, that difference gets reimbursed. So even out of county money, there'll only be sixty percent of that, forty percent gets reimbursed, but that from the state. So relatively small bump.
Right.
Thank you, we appreciate you.
All right, thank you. Stephanie, did you, uh, wanna come forward?
Okay, I'm here for the, um, general election stipend. Apparently, there was, um, confusion on that. It's a general election stipend that was presented in July of twenty twenty-four. The law went into effect July first of twenty twenty-four and was brought to, um, all the clerks across the state as attention from state board accounts and in the election division. So it retained to those counties that do not have a voter registration board. So legisla-, legislators added, um, to that code and so that IC code is three dash seven, that's twelve dash twenty-two. So our county does not have a separate voter registration board. So those duties fall upon, um, myself. And so they had, um, added a B section to that state statute that, um, your fiscal body could give a stipend to the clerk up to twenty-five hundred dollars, and that's for general elections. Um, and so the recorded meeting for July of twenty twenty-four and the August meeting and the minutes reflect, um, are correct. But, um, the salary ordinance says general presidential elections, which in the state of Indiana, under IC code three dash five dash one dash two, there's only five types of elections in the state of Indiana that they recognize. Um, one being the general election, municipal election, a primary election, a school district election, and a special election. So a presidential, what we coined that term, is general election category under that state statute. But there's, under state law, there's not a labeled presidential election. Um, so you all have voted on, um, Councilman Fleming went ahead and matched it, um, for two thousand dollars. And so, um, I look at it as a clerical, you know, human error that it was labeled a presidential. This stipend does not get paid on off-election years, nor does it get paid, um, for municipal election, which only one we have in this county is the city of Salem. So it's just general elections only. On the budget line item, it was, it's labeled as presidential. And on my presentation, forty-five seconds into that meeting on budget hearing part two, and when I turned in my budget, I made notation that the general election stipend had to be brought back in to play because we have elections in twenty twenty-six.
Anybody have any questions for Stephanie on that? I did, to shed some light, I did have our attorney look into that just to make sure. And what Alyssa had give to me, you know, says that there's nothing prohibiting the council from awarding that in every election, but it doesn't say. The way we did the approval of it was for presidential election. So she said that was okay. She didn't see anything that said that you had to do the stipend, uh, on anything other than the presidential election years. So we may need to have her look at that again too before we make a decision. But that is what, what she had found under that when, when I had, I asked her to take a look at it, so. I would recommend you take a look at it again.
Yeah, it was, it was tabled from July twenty-four meeting to August, um, because she reviewed and gave her opinion then. Um, I did review the email that was forwarded to me, and to me, it appears, um, that she thought it was something new that she gave her opinion on back in July to August meeting, and she presented her opinion in August of twenty twenty-four. Because under state statute, it was not, um, a presidential election as part of the general category. And so that's what the state statute that they added was for general elections.
This information that Bubba requested is her second review of that, so we can have that reviewed again. So just, it's different from her first initial review of that, just to be transparent, everybody know what that is, so.
Stephanie, what's this man go for?
Sorry.
What, the stipend, what is it, was it cover on, on your guys' end? Was it help cover?
Well, it, it's a stipend for the circuit court clerk, myself. It's a stipend because legislature, legislative bodies and the Clerk Association, when they were presented in session, it was because the beast now of general elections, what they had became, and so it's a stipend to go above. If your county, it only comes into play if your county does not have a voter registration board. So like currently, we have a county election board. So those counties that have voter registration boards, they usually match their salary, what they pay the county election board. The county election board gets paid on off-election years and election years, and it's six thousand a year. So if we wanna implement a voter registration board in our county, most time we're gonna match that. So that would be a six thousand dollars every year, every election. So it's kind of, you know, what do you wanna do? I mean, 'cause I will tell you the, how elections and what we see on the national level, Washington County is not exempt from that. I mean, elections, just since I started, this is my twelfth election, back in March of twenty eighteen, when I started with the county, it has progressively gotten worse. And if you think that Washington County is like Mayberry and we don't have, you know, all what I call passionate voters, you're wrong. I mean, it, it's, it's nonstop. And basically, there's two of us, and then I have to pull my girls on the court side over to help. So basically, it's myself and another deputy that run the elections and voter services. So, I mean, during election time, it's, it's long hours.
Sure.
And so they recognize that since clerks are on salaries.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? All right, we'll have our review again and then likewise, it'll be the October meeting before we would vote on anything.
So basically, you all can think on, 'cause I looked at it as clerical error and I did not receive, I did not receive that ordinance when it was written, so I didn't realize. So I was just looking on the budget, have, it's, it's general, the way it was, it was headed. It wasn't, the IC code's not for presidential elections.
I think the way that we approved it before was just for presidential elections. But that'd be what we'll need.
Yeah, I think where the confusion came in, that there was a presidential election on the horizon because the recorded meeting and the minutes do not reflect.
Right.
A presidential only stipend.
So that's what we would need to determine, but we'll have her check again and then we'll make that decision in October.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Brent Kelly, you guys.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning, gentlemen, ladies, how are you today?
Thank you, sir.
Good morning.
Uh, we were looking at the proposed budget that, uh, was sent to us, uh, a couple of weeks ago. And I was looking at the proposed six percent raise, um, that was looking, uh, to be given for dispatch. One way of thought, and, and I understand looking at it through the county's eyes, a six percent raise and the elimination of overtime, it looks a little bit on paper. But that thought process is linear and it doesn't really affect, if you look at it from thirty thousand, it doesn't affect the people who are involved in this as well, specifically the dispatchers. If the six percent is awarded, uh, under the agreement that overtime, uh, is gonna be eliminated, my dispatchers are gonna be taking a pay cut. This authorization for them to have four hours of overtime that was included into their schedule since back in the Claude Combs era, uh, that is, that's well documented and has been that way. It was never caught by, it was never included in the salary ordinance or the handbook or anything like that. It's just something that's gone. This is something that I've had conversations with the sheriff and individuals, um, people on board. I seen, I saw this as a problem at the very beginning, and I've been working to try to change that. And I've been doing my due diligence, but breaking down the numbers, if you look at it, we, the dispatcher would be taking a pay cut.
Right now.
Um, at six percent, the amount of money that they're, that they get right now with the four hours of overtime, it's, uh, comes out to about forty thousand three ninety-eight, okay? With the proposed raise, the dispatchers are gonna be losing, uh, about six hundred dollars a year. And my shift leads are gonna be losing about seven hundred dollars a year. Even if you increase that raise to seven percent, dispatchers are still gonna be losing a couple of hundred bucks a year and, uh, the leads are gonna be losing about three hundred dollars a year. That sounds nominal in the grand scheme of things and everything, but, you know, these are people that, you know, they have to put food on their family's table and they're working. And you're asking them to continue on working for the county at a decreased pay overall, right? If you take away the overtime. If we're going to make this even out, then the raise needs to be commensurate, uh, to where at least they're not losing money. Couple that with the fact that, uh, employee contributions have increased significantly. If they don't get the funds that they need to at least break even, they're working, basically, they're paying to work here. All right? Um, it's, it's not fair. No other, no other department in the county, um, got a decrease in pay. There's, it, it's recommended for a decrease in pay. All right? And if you break down the numbers and if you look at it and, and you take it to where, um, you, you put all that stuff aside, nine-one-one is operating five hundred eighty-three dollars in the red with a, with a six percent for the dispatchers, six seventy-seven oh eight in the red for the shift leads. They see this, people aren't, they, they see what's coming, and I, I just lost my senior dispatcher, my most experienced dispatcher, um, because of pay and because of stress from the job, right? She saw the writing on the wall, or she's seeing it, or, and, um, we're talking about retention, and I know that's been a, a big issue, uh, that we've talked about in several of our meetings and everything. Retention, reducing pay is, is, is not a good retention tool. It's actually gonna lead to an exodus, as, as opposed to drawing people in, getting them trained, getting them to stay here. On paper, it looks really good because you're gonna give them a six percent raise. It's not a six percent raise, it's only on paper. If you look at how it affects them overall, they're losing money to work for this county. I would, I would recommend, uh, I, I gave, on the second page here, is, I've got it broken down to a six percent raise, a seven percent raise, and if you were to give them an eight percent raise, um, that puts them in the black, two hundred twenty-four dollars for dispatchers and only a hundred and forty-five dollars, uh, for shift leads annual, all right? And if you break that down to a percentage of what everyone else is getting across the board, it's less than one percent of a raise that they're gonna be given. All right? Just for them to break even, it's gonna have to be at an eight percent. All right? Couple that into, again, with the increase that, that they're having to pay for insurance, it's actually still not breaking even, they're, they're still gonna lose money on that, right? Uh, I'm trying to get people here, I'm trying to get people retained, I'm trying to get people, uh, to man our dispatch centers so we can serve our community, and I can't do that. We can't, we're gonna be taking money away from them. The hours that they work right now are, are, are long enough. I'm doing everything that I can and I've, I've come up with, I've been working on this for months and I've, I've spoken to Ms. Kyra Adenozium about it, and I've spoken to Cheryl about it, even Ms. Michelle about it. And I'm still working on, uh, coming up with a plan that's gonna be legal and, and something that's gonna benefit everybody, and that will eliminate, eliminate overtime. But six percent is, is, it won't do, gentlemen, uh, and ladies, uh, just put it out there. It, it's, it's not gonna be enough for them to sustain, and it's not gonna be enough for us to sustain our, our workforce and, uh, for the county, for the sheriff's department, for nine-one-one. I would ask that you could look at that and, uh, please come up with a number, uh, that is going to be, uh, I don't even wanna say beneficial, but that, that's going to ease, ease the pain and ease the tension for the dispatchers because they know, they see, they watch, they've been watching the hearings and everything. They're, they're, they're kinda seeing which direction this is going. I don't wanna lose people, it's hard, I've, I've got open positions right now and I can't keep them, and I just lost another one because empty things like this happen. Our pay needs to be where we can sustain people, where we can retain people, and this is just the opposite of what our intended purpose is.
Well, I don't think that we can do way overtime fully because we might chip away, I think, over the years, you know? Trying to get it down and, and get this percentage up there, but I think we need to look at it a little closer because retention is anything in, in the budget, you know? And, um, nine-one-one and sheriff and, and amlets, and we have to have those types of people. And I've heard comments, you know, that they knew what the job was they're taking, but we, and it takes a special kind of person to do these jobs, you know? You really can't just throw anybody in there and, and expect them to do these jobs. But, uh, some people think you can, but you can, 'cause I've been there.
Mr. Shaw, you made a very good point. I mean, yeah, and, and that's, uh, on the premise because with the amount of people that we have or the amount of positions that we have open right now, we still have to train them. And the people who are gonna be training them is gonna be myself and my two shift leads, right? And until we get everyone full, we're gonna have, there's gonna be overtime that's gonna be incurred because I have empty seats, right? And if they're gonna be training, that's gonna be taking two, two people out of my work rotation who would normally be sitting in the chairs to cover people right now, and that's gonna be covered by me, right? So I'm the only one, uh, myself and Danny Stimpowski, uh, she works there part-time as a dispatcher and people call in sick, uh, if they're on vacations or whatever, you know, they're entitled to take their, to, to use their benefits. And someone has to, someone has to man those seats, right? So I have two choices. I can either have, I can either institute mandatory overtime and have one of my dispatchers come in and fill that seat, and we're paying them time and a half, or I can do it and I'm on salary, so it's not costing the county any money that way. And I, I notice that, and I know that, and that's part of my job, and I'm willing to do that, right? To do my part to save a little bit of overtime, you know, for the county that I can do. But then again, you know, I, I have, I have a family as well, all right? And if, if as soon as we can get people trained, as soon as we can get them into chairs, and we can get this ship afloat again, um, eventually, you know, it will right itself. But right now, this, this, these are growing pains because we have people coming in, we have people leaving. And they see what's going on there, if there's better opportunities that they see for them that's causing them to leave, whether they go out of the private sector or whether they're transferring to other departments to pay more money. They have to feed their families as well. And we can't do that if we're taking money out of their pockets and food off of their teeth.
And one of the reasons that this, uh, was put in place years ago too, um, is because it is actually cheaper to pay overtime than it is to hire additional full-time people and have to pay for benefits. It's just something that has to be taken into consideration and, and we do that, uh, kinda the same way back there in the jail. You know, according to the jail staffing analysis, we should have more jailers, but we are getting by with what we have. But we are also working overtime back there in the jail and paying them a considerable amount of overtime to cover things versus hiring more full-time people that then you have to pay benefits to. So there are other departments that look at it in the same way, that it's actually cheaper to pay the overtime than it is to hire more full-time people, which is a possibility if, uh, you know, if you start cutting out that overtime and you're gonna have to replace, somebody's gotta work those hours. And whether it's somebody that's getting paid a straight time or somebody getting paid a time and a half versus paying your, your benefits at the end of the day.
You know, our.
By definition, you know, dispatcher, one in law enforcement with the sheriff's department, if fire EMS, you know, by definition of the law, we are essential personnel, we're first responders, right? So with that, that means that we have to be in the chair. So with that, that means that we have to be in the chair, those positions have to be manned twenty-four seven, three sixty-five, no exceptions, right? And it, it, it is hard to do with people going away because the counties, because of the county that they're working for isn't paying what they need to be paid to keep the lights on in the house, right? It, it, it's tough, I get it, um, and in that regard, I don't want to say it's unnecessary, evil, but it is, it is necessary. And they don't make that much money anyway. We're still third lowest paid dispatch center in, in every county that touches us and every, and out of the ten counties that are equal in size or similar in size and, uh, population to us, we're the second lowest paid behind, uh, in front of only Jimmings County still, right? And they're getting ready to get raises as well, I don't know what they're going to be, but the way that's going right now, they're going to keep going forward and we're going to be actually taking a half a step back if this current budget proposal goes through. It's not fair to them, it's not fair to the county, it's not fair to the citizens.
One thing that I was getting ready to say, I've, I've bounced this off the wall a million times, uh, since it come up and, you know, I'm, I'm not sure that there's a clear cut answer for it. I mean, we all know that the overtime, you know, when we're sitting here trying to set a budget, it's, you know, it's a big, it's a big animal for us to handle. But the one thing that, that I thought about and this is something that I, I want the council, council to think about, before we, um, you know, vote on this next, next meeting, next month, um, I, I, I really feel like for now, where we're at, um, because we do know if, if, if we take that away, it is going to affect, uh, these employees, but my thoughts are, you know, I would like to see a committee formed with representative from the sheriff, the jailer, EMS, the public safety, where this overtime is a, is a, uh, concern, but that committee with, with a representative from each of those and then three council members, um, and, and start this committee, leave the budget, um, you know, as presented with the overtime in there, you know, for twenty-six and then work on this moving forward. Because I just don't see an answer, um, you know, in it until we do more research, you know? We, this kind of hit quick and it's hard to make that decision because it's going to affect a lot of things here and I just don't think we've, um, put enough time in it yet to make that decision. I don't want to be, uh, reactive, I would rather be proactive and form this committee and start working on this and see if it's something that we can help not only, you know, through the overtime, but, you know, through scheduling, that kind of thing and try to help these guys, you know? They don't want to pay any more overtime than what they have to. You know, Brent and I have talked about this multiple times over the years. It, you know, they know overtime's a big issue, but they also have to do their job and they have to be able to retain the employees that they have and I think that retention is a big thing and if we, if we cut that, um, you know, I think we're going to have a problem with retention. So, you know, that's something I would like for the council to, to consider, um, you know, to, to, to leave it as presented and then put this committee together and start working on it, see if there's ways and see if we can contact more, uh, counties and see how they're dealing with it as well. I think it was great that we bring it to light because as Todd mentioned before, it, it is something that has really jumped up over the years that we've, you know, it's, it's, it's costing the county more and more money to do that, but we also don't want to cut away from our public safety and that's just my personal, uh, feelings on that. So I hope that the council would maybe consider doing something along that line and leaving the budget, uh, the way it was and then get this committee together and see if we can work on it going forward.
I do think that's a, I think that's a great idea. I think there needs to be a lot more thought process that goes into this. I think everybody can agree that, you know, you can't fully cut overtime out of these departments. You know, are there some ways that things could be trimmed down? Sure, I think everybody could probably agree on that. But, uh, there needs to be, I think, a, a lot more thought process that goes into it in consideration before we chip at it.
We'll do our due diligence, but, uh, a comment that you just made, it, it would actually concern me in the long run, you know, because you were talking about, and, and I appreciate with, with the committee and that's, that's actually a good thing to go, but when you're trying to dictate what schedules that we're going to work, it's, we're fluid, alright? And, and we, we don't work for the court system, we don't work for any other government agency, we work Monday through Friday, eight to four, weekends and holidays off no matter what. We, we get called in, uh, because of, of natural disasters, uh, God forbid an active shooter, uh, a really bad accident, uh, patsy event or type thing like that, so they have, it has to be fluid. So if, if we set something like that, that's the reason why. I mean, according to our employee handbook, is this gentleman right here, he's the one that approves and sets the schedules for us, alright?
I, I understand your concerns, I don't think he is, he is, you used the word dictate and the reason I'm saying is, I don't think that would be the goal of this group. It's getting everybody together and you guys helping us find a way. Sadly, you know, we all knew what we were signing up for, budgets can be difficult. But in this case, I agree with Bubba, I think we need to take our time, talk to you guys, but I just wanted to clarify that that would not be anything, you used the word dictate and, and that's not what this would be, this would be us working together.
Yeah, we don't, if we, we want to work with you all.
Yes, sir, and, and I get that, which brings up again my final point of concern. I mean, i- if we do things the way they are right now, right? Uh, my overtime's been taken out of my budget and it was transferred over to the sheriff, right? And to my understanding, that, that overtime has been taken out of his budget as well. So now, if we keep everything that is, then I'm going to have to be reallocated the overtime money into my, and, and to our account when we can pay our dispatchers overtime.
I think, is that what you were saying was putting overtime back in?
We were going to put it back in.
Yeah, we were going to go, we're resetting it.
Yes, that was my, for, for the, the original way that it was presented, uh.
In, in this particular case, I guess I would disagree. I, I mean, I, I like his proposal and, and from a budgetary standpoint, going forward, you're better to raise a person's salary and get away with this, from this mandatory four-hour built-in deal that, that should have never been made, and I'm not mad at anybody, but this is much more clear, this is much more legal, this is much more upfront and from a budgetary standpoint going forward. And I, I am totally for raising these salaries up to where they need be and cutting that overtime line. I'm totally for that. I mean, that, that's my opinion, I, I'm not going, if we want to stick with the overtime, I just think going forward, this would be a much more clear way to go.
Mr. Kelly has got a, a twelve-hour shift that he can propose that would work.
And we, we can do that and then, and again, that's where, that's where the sheriff and I, I mean, we would manage our employees, I mean, we're the managers, that's what we do, we, you know, to make sure that, that we're going to be in compliance. Mr. Armstrong, thank you, I, I appreciate that and, and, uh, I've been working on this for a long time and like I said, I think, I've, I've been talking to, to my sheriff here many times and we work together. I spoke to Ms. Kyra and to Cheryl, Ms. Michelle even, uh, again, to, they're tired of us, okay? And I know, and this is something that, that we need to, you know, that we need to go so we can get everyone back on track or we're going to save the county money, it may not cost you anymore, it may not save you anymore, but it, we're going to, it'll keep it, for lack of a better word, a status quo for where we're at right now. And I think that this right here is going to be the best option for everyone and then we're just going to have to manage our, our employees overtime.
And I commend you for, for bringing, doing the work and, and bringing that offer to us, so, thank you.
It might cost us a little upfront, but, uh, it, it, it might work.
Thank you.
I, I appreciate everybody's input today and I also say thank you for allowing, uh, Kelly to try to explain things to you a little bit, um, and I think that that's a great idea, uh, President Abbott, that we put a committee together to move forward with this, to try to work this out because we are willing to do our part on our end. I also just want to make a, a comment that when the budget hearings were held, I think the decision to, to address this and, and, and it doesn't need to be addressed, was made based on numbers that we didn't know what the true numbers were at the time either. That one particular line item included not just overtime, uh, vacation time, comp time and, and holiday pay all came out of that. And then after running reports and separating that out, it was a, it, it gave us a better understanding and I don't know, I sent you those emails, but I think they were a little bit difficult to read, the way it jumbled them up and I need to do a better job of getting that, be able to print those out for you guys and understand those because when I recently ran a report, uh, Monday, what we famously call Time Guard Monday this past week, I ran the report again to see where we were at and dispatch is only, I say only, but dispatch was responsible for, for twenty-five percent of that overtime that we've been paying out. And the biggest part of that overtime is being consumed, um, by the jail and, uh, and again, we're, I've been working on things with Captain Ward back in the jail to try to do some things too. I spoke to some of you guys about that, we talked about moving some money around from some of the, uh, open positions that we have that we haven't used to try to get some overtime and we recently hired one last week, um, former, we had left, wanted to come back and work some overtime, so we're going to try to, um, work that individual down a little bit here and there to try to, uh, chip away that back in the jail as well. So I, I think that's a great idea, put a committee together. I said we're willing to do our part moving forward to try to figure out how we can handle this.
Yeah, I think, I think they're all good options and this is a good option as well. It's something the council needs to, uh, decide which way we're going to set it for twenty-six. But like I said before, I just don't think we can, uh, I don't want to make a knee-jerk reaction that's going to cause, um, issues with our retention committee, um, which, you know, I guess, I might as well get that started, so if, if you guys are willing to be on that committee, get one of the guys from EMS as well to, alright? So you guys go on there and I need three council people that are willing to work on it, alright? There you go, there's the three, Brad, Andrew and Todd. So we'll get that committee started, um, and we'll try to get, I know it's tough for you guys on meeting times, but I'll get with you and, and the EMS gentleman and, uh, that way, uh, you know, going forward, we can have people looking into this and look at other avenues that maybe we can take going down the road that's going to help us with these overtime issues. And I, I appreciate all the work that you've done trying to make that work out as well and that may be a better option for us, you know? But those are the things that I, I feel like this come up pretty quick, you know? And I just don't want to cut all that out and, and then have a big problem with our retention and I'm afraid that's what would happen if we cut it, um, you know, like we had talked about, about how to do it. So that's something we just need to decide and, uh, we'll go ahead and get this committee, committee started, start working on it.
Well, I appreciate your insight because you, you call it right down the middle and, and that's exactly what's happening right now, so I appreciate your recognition of that.
Alright, thank you guys. Any other questions for, for Brent and him on their budget part too? I mean, that's just, that's the reason why we're here this morning, to try to get this ironed out so that we can make a decision.
Kelly has done a great job doing his research, I, I let Kelly make this, uh, by the launch and run with it and he's done a really good job and I don't have time to validate every single number that he comes up with and things, but I did have my jail lieutenant in my office, um, two weeks ago. He came from Boyd County Sheriff's Department where we've hired him from. Um, his wife also works at Harrison County Sheriff's Department, so I asked him, I said, hey, where's your wife working at? He said, Harrison County Sheriff's Department, I said, what does she do there? She's a dispatcher. I said, what ship does she work there? He said, that's exactly what we do, we're watching and examining. He said, I can tell you, right? So it's really not uncommon for these dispatchers to work those twelve-hour shifts and to work that four hours of overtime, um, because it's just something that is a common practice with emergency services again, in lieu of hiring more people to, to, to do that. But again, that's something that, you know, the committee can, can dig deeper into and, and find that information out. Again, we appreciate you guys' time today, thank, thank you everybody for being willing to listen to us.
That's your hard word.
Appreciate it.
Mike, Tony, you guys, want to come up? Let's see if there's any questions there.
Well, pretty much, Bubba, you pretty much answered. I've said that the fact that we handed out to you guys previously, uh, had, uh, most of the numbers in there we could come up with. I think that's a very good idea you, you brought forward with this committee thing. I mean, we'd be willing to participate in that, to try to come up. We're kind of, like I said, we're just kind of at a standpoint now of, of what we're going to be receiving for this next year's budget and, and I kind of go from that point on. Like I said, we, I do go ahead, I still want to just go ahead and just plan on removing that floater position, uh, for now and, uh, go, go from that point on and try to come up with a solution, like I said, with this committee. I mean, I'm, I'm thinking we can possibly get some answers out of that if we can. We can work this and work this and work these numbers, work these numbers till we're both, uh, cross-eyed so it's kind of a solution of, you know, what's going to happen down the road, so.
Late to the party, so what exactly are you willing? Now, do, have you lost some employees? We lost, do, do we replace them?
I've replaced, I've already hired two, yeah.
Okay, so, we started, start this week, we'll start last week, we'll start this week.
So I think back in our last budget discussion, you know, when we first talked, um, with, with Tony and Mike, uh, from the EMS, we were going to allow that floater, so, um, but, but in talking to Tony, he said he, he didn't think that was really going to help, um, you know, his overtime problem. So he was willing to cut that out, which would be, uh, I think if we, if I had it wrote down here correct, an EMT on that floater position would be around seventy-four grand, um, and a paramedic would be somewhere around ninety-three. So if they do cut that out, we're going to save a little there that we had thought we were going to put in. But we need to determine if we're going to, um, you know, leave that, uh, overtime line there as presented, uh.
They wanted option A.
Yeah. Thank you. So if you look back at your packet that they put together for us, what they had presented there was option A was the one that, that we had looked at, I don't know if you guys got that filled over here or not, but.
Came in.
It was in the, the, the red folder that Mike passed out the last time. So basically it was, it shows there a total budget increase of eighty-two, four twenty. So basically it was, it shows there total budget increase of eighty-two, four, twenty-four.
Take that floater out, that's what you're looking at.
Yeah, if you take the floater.
And that stuff that we really can't, we have no control over on the, you know, that was the raise for the employees. And that's also we have to raise our, our other budgets for, for their needs going up.
And I did, Michelle did give you the paper too that shows where we're at right now as far as on the public safety budgets there. The top one, that fund eleven fifty-one is EMS line. Which if, if you look at that, we had appropriated a hundred and eighty-six thousand, six eighty-sixth last year. So to this point in the year, on the EMS one, they've, they've used about one fifty-one of that. Still have thirty-five thousand left in that overtime, you know, budget to get through the rest of twenty-five. Now keep in mind, we've got, you know, some holidays, vacations, you know, there's still some of that that's probably going to come out of there. But my point being it's, you know, it's running about where they thought it was going to run there as far as what we appropriated for last year and twenty-five.
Right now, looking back to the end of August, we ain't got September's numbers yet. We won't get them until today or tomorrow. We're looking at the end of August protected payroll budget being under seventeen thousand, three hundred and twenty-nine dollars. When it comes to payroll, no vehicles for, we've had these meetings before where you, you gotta look at payroll as a whole. Because of the makeup of our people. It's not like if we have a dump truck driver off or we'll just use a county garage, whoever the highest paid job is there. A supervisor off or a crane operator or whatever, you don't have the option of not having that person in there. And vice versa, we have to fill that spot. And we may have that crane operator working a truck to fill a shift if somebody calls in. And that position may be just an EMT position. Cause that's the only person we got. We don't have the option of downing that truck. So our payroll as a whole, you gotta look at that as a whole. And I know, like I said, we've brought this discussion up several times with the Angels Board. I think they all understand it. But you gotta look at payroll as a whole. Cause those line items do fluctuate. I do, for the last five years, I know they keep saying they can't do it. Payroll needs to be out, broke out as a line item by itself, not each one of them. I know you guys had discussions on the overtime and all that, but you gotta look at overtime as a whole. So overtime as a whole, your budget is one billion, one hundred thousand this year, nine fifty-four. And to the end of the year, we're looking at one billion, eighty-three thousand. So we're looking at payroll as a whole being under the budget. We've had people off this year. We've had what, three people off for injuries this year. We've had to fill in with whoever we can get. It could be a supervisor, it could be a paramedic for an EMT spot. It may even advance for a paramedic spot. May even be me, may even be Tony. In that case, you get free gratis, but payroll as a whole, we're looking good on our numbers as payroll as a whole for the year end.
Any, any question? You guys got any questions?
So what we're talking about is striking the floater and putting the fifty thousand back in the overtime.
Going to option A.
Yeah, so that, that kind of breaks it all down.
Just take the board over, handout and forward.
Yeah, that would be running it with option A. And then like I mentioned, we'll have a committee, you know, start working on that. Seeing if, you know, there's some way we can help everyone. And I just think that would be the best road to take here moving forward. That's, that's my personal opinion.
Do you want to look at?
Michelle and I have talked about that too. Well, so what was that?
What are we looking to do? Like I said, I come late to the party. I know Tony tried to tell me a little bit that he also came late to the party.
I think the, what the, what he was talking about is forming a committee with three of us, all of you guys. And everybody putting their heads together in the, moving forward in the future and discussing things. You know, if you guys see ways to cut things, you know, save money, this and that, whatever, you know, discuss it more instead of making an instant, you know, cut to something.
Yeah, that's, that's pretty much what, what I was trying to say. Be following their option A package. Which, you know, they, they made some cuts and Mike down, Mike did a lot of work on this as well, so.
Alright, we do appreciate it.
Yeah, I appreciate all you guys, you know, doing what you can do to help us. Because, you know, every year it gets a little bit tougher and we all know that, you know, the things that we're dealing with, you know, from the state. But I think moving forward, we're going to have to get, you know, more creative. And hopefully that this committee will be able to do some things there that will help all of us together to, to get it to, you know, the best we can get it every year, so. Anybody else got any questions or comments about that? Yes.
How do you got, you guys like that idea or?
This committee?
Yeah.
Okay, anybody got any? Gonna have to be a lot of changes coming down the road, so. Yeah. I think that would be a mighty fine idea.
Keep everybody looped that way.
Yeah, yeah, and that way everybody's.
Takes assumptions away and stuff like that.
Because one thing I, you know, this is one thing that I want to say, and I think there's been a lot of miscommunication. Sometimes it goes around, you know? And when this all got brought up through our budget discussions, through the hearings, you know, it, it wasn't in stone that we were going to take this overtime away. It was just something that we were looking at and something I think we need to look at, you know, moving forward. Because it has become a big part of that budget on public safety. And I don't think at any point in time we had ever made a decision to go ahead and take that away. And I think that, that rumor got around that we were definitely taking it away and that wasn't the case. It was just in discussions and, and these discussions have to, you know, we have to have these discussions. And I think the more information that we can get about it and the more, you know, work that we do going forward. There again, we're going to be proactive with it instead of reactive and just making a snap decision. And then that causing us problems with the things I was mentioning with retention. And just being able to keep the public safety, you know, staffed. And that's what we want to do. And it's a hard enough problem for you guys, like we've all talked about it before. And just finding people, period, you know? So I'm afraid if we made that cut to that part of the budget, it would, it would hurt us with that retention, so. But at no point in time were we ever set in stone. These, these were just discussions that we were having to, to try to get our budget and do our due diligence to the taxpayer to try to set that budget. And, and those are things that we have to look at. But I think that was some false information that got around that we were definitely cutting it and that wasn't the case. So that's why we called this meeting. We wanted to talk a little bit more about it and try to put our heads together and come up with something. But I think at this point in time, that's our best option. And, and that's just my personal opinion. And I know we'll make that decision at the next meeting, but yeah, I think that, that may be the best way for us to go here moving forward.
I think your retention thing gets it on the head. That's going to be the biggest challenge you're going to have. Anything shy of what that is? Go on to twenty-four seventy-two, that would help bring people in. But it's also going to cost you, without looking at it, roughly three hundred thousand dollars more to do away with the overtime. We go to twenty-four seventy-two. Will that help us? I think that would be a big step up for us to want people to come to work for us like it used to be back in the day. That would be a big plus if we could afford it, but three hundred thousand dollars more to add four more employees. You're getting rid of overtime which ran low over here.
Well, Michelle, this lady to my right, I'll tell you, without her I would be lost. As you can tell, she, she keeps me on my toes, but we talked about it a lot too. And, you know, I think, I think a lot of that idea to form that committee comes from Michelle as well. And I, I appreciate the work that she's done. Because like I said, we've been slinging stuff against the wall ever since these discussions started. She's getting probably sick of me saying, here, run this number, here, run these, these numbers, or look at it this way, or look at it that way. We've, we've probably ran it a kazillion different ways at this point. But, you know, I think, I think that's our, our best option moving forward. That's there again, my thing. Appreciate you guys coming in. Thank you for.
I see you guys can always come to the Angels Board meetings, you know, I mean.
Eight o'clock, so aren't welcome, they're early, but.
They are early, they are. Usually have donuts though. That's a good thing we're fat guy, you gotta have donuts.
Our doors are always open. If there's any, everybody, we're kind of like Michelle, the latter numbers is kind of matching up to what we're saying, so. Our doors is always open too. You want to throw something, walls in and sticks, come on down. We don't want to throw it in the back of the truck. So the animals just sometimes things do stick to the walls there.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Rick, did you have anything this morning?
I don't have anything today.
You didn't get it? You don't want to talk today? Usually you always talk. You're just here for the entertainment. Right, gotcha. Alright, let's see here. There was one other question I had. Mr. Yuan might be able to help us with this, but with the, before, and we need to know this moving forward before we get this budget set in stone. But my question was about the, the, the fairgrounds deal, Todd. What, I mean, what exactly on that fairgrounds line are we, we looking to leave in that budget?
It's pretty simple. Did you pass those on there?
Uh, yeah, I'll pass them. He's got it, he's here. Todd, you want, you want to go over that then?
Yeah, it's pretty simple.
How'd everybody got?
The, the top part there was the expenditure previously. That's at forty-eight, seven thirty-three was all benefits, insurance, overtime. The second line was the annual fuel cost and that's just gasoline, not diesel. Which basically was, was the mowing aspect. So it comes up to fifty thousand, five hundred and thirty-three dollars total expenditure. Versus if we took the lowest bid of the four, three or four that we received, the twenty-one thousand dollars a year. That's thirty-five, not weeks necessarily, but thirty-five mowings. Which should be more than adequate even in consideration, but there'll be a couple additional mowings. You know, right before the fair to make sure the fairgrounds looks good before our county fair. And then proposing, well, we've been in the process of rewriting the contract. Should be ready next Tuesday to make up the difference in the duties for the groundskeeper's position being eliminated. The Fair Board will assume all responsibility for taking care of the fairgrounds, less the mowing. County's contract, twenty-one thousand dollars would come out of the commissioner's budget. And then the twenty thousand dollars for the Fair Board to do as they see fit. They are the boots on the ground. They're the ones that need, they're the ones that knows what needs done up there. So that brings, brings the total to forty-one thousand dollars. So if you subtract that off fifty thousand, five thirty-three, you got a cost savings to Washington County of ninety-five hundred and thirty-three dollars. They are going to take the remaining funds, you use this twenty thousand dollars as our number for an annual payment. Got three months left in the year. We want to give them five thousand dollars, which they're going to put toward, they've been working with Brent Miller. And going to plug into his camera system and going to add six additional cameras up there. So they're going to turn right around and use the prorated amount that's left for the end of the year, which is five thousand dollars to do that. And it's all pretty well cut and dry.
Okay, well, I appreciate that because I think everybody was just, you know, we weren't sure exactly how that was going to shake out. So I appreciate you providing that information. Anybody have any questions for Todd on that then?
I, I have a question, Todd, for clarification. On the Fair Board contracting funds, just for clarification, am I understanding that that is not to hire a person to do these jobs? That is for separate jobs contracted as they come up, as they see fit? So it's true elimination of the position?
Yeah, this, this is not, well, that's their call. They can take that twenty thousand dollars and hire whoever they please. But the idea here is this really makes more sense because obviously you councilmen and commissioners really have no business micromanaging the fairgrounds. It doesn't belong to the county. Our goal is to see that the upgrades and the work and the upkeep gets done. That's the goal. Make sure it gets done and it looks nice. Necessary repairs are made when they need to be made because you know how old it's how it is with the, even with your own home. If you let things go too long, you know, a problem that would have cost five hundred dollars to fix, you let it go. It ends up costing much, much more. So that's the idea is preventative maintenance and let the Fair Board do their job and take care of the fairgrounds with our blessing. And give them the tools to do it. And I think it will be a much better situation.
How are we going to explain, I'm not being smart, but how are we going to explain that? It hasn't been kept alive and can't make it on Randy because he didn't have the tools. They wasn't giving him the equipment and paint. So I, how do you, how do you explain this?
Explain what again? Explain what again, I'm not all.
Okay, uh, okay, there's buildings that were needed to be painted.
Yeah, that, that was his job.
Yeah, but they wasn't giving him the paint to do anyway.
I don't know where you heard that at.
I, I, I was up with it.
So, what do you really ask?
And then, and then the floor, Joe, have you looked at those yet? Over there, that one building, that, where the gravel's just pushed underneath there?
Yeah, sure, the band boards need replaced. I'm not gonna sit here and tell you that there are repairs up there that need to be done, that should've been done. These little, like, right now, they're fairly minor, and, uh, this is the whole point of, uh, this just makes much more sense, so. They know what needs to be done, um. I say let them do it, and it will get done. It hasn't been getting done like it should, everybody knows that, so, uh, this is the solution.
So you, kid ministers are gonna oversee the fair board then, make sure it's done? Other grounds and?
We always have.
Yeah, is your question that they're gonna oversee the mowing contract, is that?
No, no, the upkeep.
The upkeep of the buildings?
Yeah.
I have all the confidence in the world in the fair board. If you give them the proper tools. Uh, no problem at all, their work ethic, those people that volunteer for all these events up there, I'm not questioning, I'm not questioning their work ethic at all, it will get done.
I got a question. Is this up top the thirty thousand that we already give, and I'm sure that they wanna know that too?
Yeah, both of these are separate from the thirty thousand, they're just the replacement for Randy, correct?
Correct.
Exactly, yes, that's what we were just sitting here looking at.
That thirty thousand dollars is, is what they think receiving for?
Yeah.
I don't know, probably forty years. Well, it's, it's not always been thirty, it's been thirty thousand for a long time.
Would this be enough to sustain the repairs that need to be done?
If I had a million dollars, I could think of things to repair it there.
I'd be saying.
Not to answer your question, no.
Yeah, I, I agree.
So, I guess we can start a bill of unmeat age. There's always things that need to be done. Lot of painting needs to be done. Lot, lot of little things could make the place look better. Keep the place from rotting down. But this is very workable, this will help. Make it better.
All right, anybody else got any questions on, on this particular deal? Todd, thank you for.
Yeah.
Clarifying that and.
Thank you, Todd, got the favor.
I would, I would encourage anybody and everybody if they, you know, you know, don't take my word for it. You wanna know what's going on up there, talk to the fair board members, or better yet, talk to the dozens and dozens, there's probably a hundred of them, volunteers over the years that, um, donate their time to make that place what it is. We have a very good fair every year up there, people work very hard and trying to help. Get a lot of volunteers, and the next time you see one, you ought to thank them. Better yet, give a chance, I'm sure they'd be willing to accept some, uh, some help, uh, from anybody else who would like to volunteer up there, even if it's just a few hours, makes a big difference. Thank you.
Thank you, Todd, appreciate it. All right. Anybody else on the council have any questions budget wise?
I did have one.
Yeah, go ahead.
Were we gonna include that, uh, four percent raise to the, uh, plan commission director as part of his salary?
I did not.
I know, that's what I'm asking.
That's why, yeah, you brought that up before.
Just because it's part of his salary.
Yeah.
Excuse me, what was that again?
The director position, that's part of Travis's salary. He didn't receive the.
Oh, and she made that correction, right?
That's what we're discussing.
Yeah, that's what we're, that's what.
Well, why was it left out?
It, we've never done it on the stipends. We give the raise on their.
Oh, the other half?
Yes.
Cause his salary is split.
Split, right, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Two different.
Yeah, I see.
So the one we did, that we did.
So he's getting four percent on portion of his salary?
On portion, I, I can.
I understand, yeah, I think he knows that. We've never, you've never done that before, you've never given the re- raise on his stipend, yeah, that's fine.
But it's up to you all.
Yeah, it's up to the council, so that is something that's, you know.
Yeah, I just feel like since it's part of his salary.
I'm sure he would appreciate it.
Just my opinion.
Yeah, that's, that's, it's whether or not we wanna add that in there or not, that, you know. When she runs these numbers, we need to know whether it needs to be on that half or on all of it.
And is that gonna be everybody with the?
I think it's only fair.
Yeah, okay, so we'll, we'll run it then, so add that, uh, so when we run these numbers with the, the new changes and putting the overtime and stuff back in, then.
Especially with the increase on insurance?
Yes, yeah, yeah, I agree. All right, anything else before, um, we end this discussion and then have Michelle run these numbers for us for the October meeting so that we can get this budget put together and present it to the state? Preston, we'll just go around and read, if you got anything else?
No, um.
Todd?
No, sir.
Good, Andrew?
That's all I had.
Brad though?
I'm good.
Okay. Michelle, do you have any questions? I guess you probably need to know more than the rest of us.
No, I gave you a news article, Harrison County is reducing our portion of the riverboat so from two percent to one percent is what we'll be receiving.
Yeah, that was just something she had caught in mind to make everybody aware of, so.
Actually, someone, um, actually turned me on to that article.
So that will be.
As of today, Harrison County still has not sent us anything telling us that, but.
All right, I don't have anything else, so. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, we'll get this.
Second.
All right, motion by Todd, second by Andrew, all those in favor, writing. All right, leaving the adjourn.